You're not on any committees, you don't get to make any decisions.
I mean, it's a feeling, man. Just slowly come up from the bottom.
So you're not hearing from staff. So.
That makes sense. It was kind of like being in a board chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't get to teach too many classes. I get that.
I'll be resuming.
Dude, I thought you went to your car.
I know, no time.
Yeah, like eight minutes. You just like disappeared. You did the Irish goodbye, you were just shoom.
No.
I was just like.
Not, no.
You know, no hurt, no hurting asking. At least you guys got that out of the way.
Exactly. Exacto, exactamente.
Ruth is still getting moved to the council meeting. I don't know about Kim.
Yeah.
I would just start some counseling online, she'll be joining online shortly.
Well, we have a quorum, so I think we're going to get started here. We have one item on the agenda for this evening's committee of the whole, and that is the Equity Commission update. And may I introduce Mary Jane Van Cleve?
One second, thank you. Good evening, council, council president, council members. Appreciate the moment. I'm with Linda Machetti. She is our administrative assistant for the Department of Equity Housing and Human Services. I'm currently the EHHS administrator and I'm the interim administrator for the Department of Parks and Rec. Tonight here, we're here to really celebrate and honor the decades worth of work around diversity, equity and inclusion, and the culmination of our Equity Commission, which we're extremely proud of. Where's our slides? Okay, we do want to, before we proceed, acknowledge the commission members that are here tonight from the Equity Commission. Oh, go back one real quick. Do you want to call out which members are here today?
Sure, we are pleased to welcome Commissioners Jones. He's one of our newest commissioners. Commissioner Kirshner and Commissioner Imayoka, they are both original Equity Commissioners.
And a few other members weren't able to make it, but we were really appreciative for those who did come tonight. Okay, go ahead and do it.
And those commissioners are Chair Hill, Vice Chair Davis, Commissioner Patty, and Commissioner Badley.
Okay, so we are here tonight to provide an overview for this past year's work and the status of our youngest Equity Commission or community group. For context and a refresher on the history, we will cover why the commission was created, provide a point in reference in just the culminating conversations. And then we also want to recognize the decades of work. So why an Equity Commission? So the city staff, so there's several things. We are dedicated to comply, support and exceed the federal acts and state laws that forbid discrimination against anyone on the basis of race, creed, color, national origin, sex, marital status, age, disability, retaliation, sexual orientation and gender, identity and military status. And we take this very serious. We just wanted to point out that there are those laws and that we do try to exceed not only the compliance, but to go beyond that. Renton has a long history with equity. Found it very interesting. So 2007 is the first time that equity is mentioned, or diversity, I should say, in our business plan. And the statement is in the 2009 to 2014 business plan saying, "Valuing our diversity of language, housing, culture, background and choices." That's a really interesting way to end a statement. I will say we've gotten better at articulating our values around diversity, but that's when it first showed up, and that had to do with the annexation of Benson. Our community drastically changed in that '08 era where we grew in population, but we were already experiencing those cultural shifts and dynamics. So ordinance 6033, this was adopted, thank you, council, 2021. This was to repurpose the Advisory Commission of Equity. So there was already something established back in 2007, and it was alive until 2010. We sunset that group and instead transitioned to the Community Liaison Committee. That group was then in effect from 2010 to 2014. And they had a very clear agenda in terms of what they were trying to accomplish during that time, and that was to improve access, build connections, promote understanding, provide critical information and encourage participation. This was significant because they established a lot of relationships in the community with community groups. And what that did is that transitioned into then the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. So that happened in 2015, and Councilmember Prince and Perez were there for the inception and the creation of that group. And the reason all of that is relevant is to come up with the Equity Commission, the question was asked to the Inclusion Task Force, "Do you want to again evolve and change how based on we've done in the past?" We have had a tradition of assessing community, assessing our practices, and then evolving to continue to grow and modernize our approaches. And the answer was no. It was a kind, but no. They still felt the Inclusion Task Force in 2020 that they still had a role in that existing configuration. And so the recommendation is now what's reflected in this ordinance, which is conduct community conversations and assess and determine what would complement the Inclusion Task Force. The community at the time was also asking for this evolution and something else in adjacent to the Inclusion Task Force. So the timing was right for us to create this second. So for the first time, we had more than just one body responsible for being the voice and two-way dialogue to our community, but now we had an opportunity through this Equity Commission.
Good evening. I want to talk a little bit about the commission's setup and some of the steps that got us to December 2023. Following adoption of the ordinance establishing the commission, applications were solicited in November and December 2021. Interviews were offered to all applicants over a three-day span from January 10 through 12, 2022. Available time slots ranged from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM during those three days, so we could create a very good sense of convenience for our applicants. We really wanted to interview as many as we were interested. After debriefing on all interviews, EHHS sent the panel's recommendations to Mayor Pavoni January 26, and council ratified those appointments March 14, 2022. Prior to the first Equity Commission meeting on April 7, EHH staff worked with the city attorney department to draft a set of bylaws to present the commission at their first meeting in April. These bylaws were approved by the commission during its June meeting and adopted by council August 15, 2022. Over the last few months of 2022, the commission received updates from human resources risk management, I'm sorry, human resources risk management, reviewed the city's demographic data based on the 2020 census, and had an opportunity to talk with Mayor Pavoni about the South King County Mayor's Statement on Law Enforcement. In November, the committee, or the commission, held a retreat during which they began to draft their vision and mission statements. I will touch on this as we get a little bit further in the presentation. We'll go a little bit deeper on their vision and mission statements. 2023 was the first full year the commission was in existence. They started the year with training on the Open Public Meetings Act and Roberts Rules, and that training was provided by our city clerk, Jason Seth. In March, the commission was presented its work plan. They began their introduction to several key topics, priorities and plans, which they reviewed, discussed and provided input on over the past several months. What you will see in the next few slides summarizes our observations of the questions they asked, the feedback they provided, and we will talk about the impact they have accomplished at a very early stage of their existence. As you've probably noticed, there are some months on the timeline during the commission, during which the commission did not meet. The canceled meetings can be attributed to a few things. In conducting some of the initial housekeeping and setup, attendance was sometimes inconsistent and meetings were canceled because the group did not have a quorum. The commission's chair resigned in late 2022, and the commission has not chosen to meet the month of December. So.
No, it's okay. You know, the visual of the timeline was really to talk about the work that it takes and the commissioners' participation. Developing something from scratch or repurposing history is never easy. We really wanted to try to honor the work that has been done, leading immediately up to that point, but as well as establish something that was valuable to the city. The commission members have been very concerned, are they providing value? And we want to make sure their time is mutually valued and that they're getting some, something from, you know, the city as well. And the fact that we were able to provide them so much context, and you'll see in their questions, is we were really able to have really substantive conversations and dialogue. It allowed to go quickly deeper with their recommendations and thoughts. And so we just wanted to acknowledge the lift from their side of getting into the cadence of attending these, developing something again that had not been, and trying to provide long-term purpose and value. So we commend them, and I think Linda as well. She was here for the transition of two administrators during this time, which was not easy as well when there's department head shifts and things of that nature. So it may seem simple, but it really is a labor of love by everybody involved. And so again, we just commend the patience of council on us coming up to speed, as well as the commission members, because they've been eager as well to produce. So what Linda has here and what we're looking at is this was conducted with our consultant last year, and this was their mission and vision. So this is from our Equity Commission members on what they feel is most important. And we really honor and try to respect that by presenting a good wide variety of subjects from policy to processes. I will say, I feel like they must be the only group that gets the variety of content presented to them compared to other groups that have a very industry or service line focus. And so it was just to illustrate a little bit of that as well.
All right, and I, so you'll see in front of you the mission and vision statement they created with our consultant. And as a result of the work here, upon this being drafted, the commission approved it during their November 8 meeting. So it's really a few days later after their retreat. So their first six months of existence, the commission was tasked with electing Chair and Vice Chair, adopting bylaws and also adopting a mission and vision statement. So by the end of their first year, they, and they only met a few months, but they had accomplished those three items that were chartered to them per the ordinance.
Okay. So these are the commission members. We hold meetings here in the council chambers and on the dais. I think throughout, there was sometimes the same questions were asked of different groups, but they were always slightly tailored based on the presentation. I think the things to take away is that they're constantly challenging us to be creative. They were challenging staff to think about how information's consumed. I mean, I've learned so much from the commission on even how people identify. When we did the census presentation, you know, the question was, well, how do youth identify? An important one was given to us is that Hispanic youth don't identify as Hispanic or Latin. They're identifying by the things that comprise of that identity, and that is indigenous, white for European and native for their indigenous bloodline, and then African. So they're not even selecting these other categories that were, you know, compiling and measuring. So they've just brought an immense amount of insight. They've challenged, again, the first one is cellphone. They keep pushing us to say, is everything cellphone-based? Are we there? They asked us what defines women and minority-owned, and they really wanted us to go deeper and to really be able to articulate what we were stating and what we were presenting. The other ones, and Commissioner Kirshner's here, it was her question to say, can we offer incentives or workshops? And this had to do with businesses when we were doing the 250-02 policy on purchasing and contracting. And so there was questions that, you know, yes, we need to be better, but there was questions we had not really discussed or thought of ourselves. The other thing in terms of presenting is we really did ask departments not to, you know, do anything more than just to present the subject matter, to not embellish, to not feel that they needed to add more than necessary. It was, it is a space, it was and is a space where staff can be vulnerable, allow themselves to be challenged and questioned. And I think we have witnessed an immense amount of wonderful conversation. I guess they have become our equity lens. They embody the philosophy and the sentiment of who are we forgetting? Who have we forgotten? Who will we make more effort for? And how are we quantifying and measuring our successes? And where can we just forever continue, grow and develop? And so they never, there's never a quick one meeting, and thankfully so, because they really squeeze out of it all of the thought process necessary to produce a valuable service and product to the community. I mean, again, they're talking about reducing barriers. This is the goal. This is, they embody that with everything. Do not assume, do not speak in government speak. It's really easy as government employees to speak that way. We're quite fluent in that language, and we realize and forget sometimes, though it does not always externally translate. They reminded us about those with disabilities, vision impairment, education levels, you know, all these things of just not just getting things out on social media, but really thinking about all of the unique circumstances, identities, as well as needs in our community.
Okay, so now we want to demonstrate a little bit about the impact this commission has had in their very brief, you know, just nearly two years. They received presentations of several items and provided feedback. One example of the impacts of some of the feedback they provided was the Renton Annex to the King County Inclusive Emergency Communications Plan. Among other things, the commission expressed how we get information to non-English speaking populations and considering the use of QR codes as a tool to access updated information, resources and other links useful during an emergency. It's kind of become that universal language, that QR. A few months later, the Emergency Management Division followed up on the progress and the status of the plan via a memo to the commission, and they provided a redlined document so the commission had a sense of what they changed following our conversation. You know, it was very articulated, and they also got a clean copy of the plan.
So the impact there is they give recommendations, what we're trying to improve upon and use that as a really great example is that we can apply their feedback, just as we do with council and mayor and executive, but theirs especially, we should be taking into consideration. And the appreciation to the Division of Emergency Management is they were kind and respectful to circle back and to make sure that the commission members know how their recommendations were folded and implied. Emergency management has a longstanding tradition of being very close to the Inclusion Task Force, the Community Liaison Group, and especially the Equity Commission because our connection. And in one of those slides, you saw that the prioritization of life and safety is on the top of not only this commission, but I know it is of council as well. And maintaining and evolving and taking those considerations in are extremely important. So we were happy to see that they applied it, and they received really great feedback. To piggyback off of that, as well as all their feedback, you know, during those meetings, we applied in the Department of EHHS to the creation of our Children's Moon Cake Festival. We used the demographics. We recognized where we had a high immigrant population. We looked at our youth to adult ratio. We knew where community groups were really great at celebrating certain events, and we planned with community. And we also walked them through our contracting process, which is great, but it's sometimes challenging even for us. But I know Carrie and her team are constantly evolving that. But their feedback helped us develop something that we completely underestimated the significance. But it is sometimes just hearing that array of questioning to help shape and develop. It's so, we just can't continue to appreciate them enough. We know they will continue to ask good questions. There's never a short supply, but we honestly encourage it. So the second to last one here is we have a few things. Again, the structure is sound. Decades of work to get to this point is valuable and valid and important. So we believe we have a sound foundation to move forward. What we'd like to commit to council moving forward is that we will collaborate with the members as the Equity Commission stays or moves, moving forward, is that we always plan with the commission on a work plan to make sure they again see what's coming for the year. They can make suggestions, and we want to get value out of it as well. So the point is again, reciprocated value. What we have lacked on, and we do apologize and want to kind of make sure this gets improved upon, is closing the loop on council being tied now to the commission's recommendations. We understand the value and their connection to you, as well as what they could be recommending via policy. So looking to provide some sort of monthly feedback, so you can see what's been presented and what feedback they've received in that way that hopefully helps you shape or inform other decisions. Next is also to commit a process where they receive that follow-up. We realized again that was missing, so we need to grow that. They saw hopefully value in hearing back from the Emergency Management Division, and we'd like to do that. I think teams then could give feedback on why or what was applied, but potentially why. They've been very smart and keen to know that some of their recommendations do require resources, and they've been very kind to help advocate and articulate, because they, you know, again, they're very pragmatic in terms of what they recommend to us. But it would be really nice for staff to be able to give that recommendation so that they know how their feedback was received or applied, or where we're kind of not capable of making some of those, but at least giving them the backup for that why. And then lastly is we owe it to the community to transition to be more transparent and provide an annual report. You know, the conversations around equity and diversity and inclusion have been phenomenal, but if you weren't in those committees or groups, you were not always privy to that information. And even however fantastic and wonderful they were. So we owe it to the community to begin to present that information. So whether or not you attend, we'd love you to, but even if you can't, that we start holding ourselves accountable and start presenting that information so we see our own progress, but also the community can see it as well and maybe champion for changes or articulate what they would like to see as prioritized.
Did you have a few items, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I have his notes.
So I really want to wrap this up. I know it feels weird for me to be on the stage here. First, I want to thank MJ and Linda for the presentation. They did a great job of kind of wrapping it up. And I want to thank the commission members that showed up tonight to meet you all. It's really been a pleasure to watch this group. The very first meeting, when they were up there kind of struggling with Roberts Rules of Orders, kind of like as all new council members do, to the last meeting that I just went to a couple of weeks ago, where they're really a high-functioning group. They gelled together. They run a very professional meeting. They're very thoughtful in their, in their process. And I would really encourage all the council members to try and attend an Equity Commission meeting. I think you would be very surprised to kind of watch their process. And I just want to kind of sum this up of where I, at least where I see this going. I think it's important for us to do a couple of things. First, it is to, to make sure that we put the correct work in front of them. And then from there, what do we do with it? And the reason why I have MJ's notes, because we were talking about this and I articulated, and she says that's what you need to say to the council. And it really comes down to three different kind of value points. And the first one is, and the obvious one will be to advise council, right? I mean, bring back policy for any number of things in terms of creating policy or changing policy. The second one, which is also very important, will be the administrative internally. Any operational, you know, we've done things with, you know, blind resumes or anything that we do internally, they can certainly help along those lines. And the last, which is, I think, unique and I think has the potential of being very powerful. When, when we were discussing the legislative agenda with them in the last meeting, one of the comments that came out of there is, how do we use our voice? You know, we're this organization, we're looking at this work, and they were concerned with an agency that wasn't necessarily operating in the best interest of Renton. And it really did kind of dawn on all of us at that time that there is a place and a position for this group to actually have a voice externally, to represent Renton thoughtfully, doing the work from Renton. You know, we could certainly have letterhead with their names on it and, and help craft something and make sure that council sees it, and we're not getting out in front of the council. But I think there's, there's some value with them also having a voice of their own. So that's kind of where I see it going. I really want to acknowledge the individuals that are here with us today. It's, it's really been a pleasure to watch this group kind of gel and turn into a very high-functioning group. So thank you, that's all I have.
And I'll, a compliment to that, sir, thank you, is they are absolutely independent thinkers. Other than giving, praising them with compliments and vice versa, we really do respect that the fact that they have all such different backgrounds, lived experience, professional careers. We appreciate it so much, because although we have a small amount, it feels like we have three to four times that being provided in the room due to the variety of all of those elements kind of cross-acting and coming together. So they are an individual group of thinkers with individual perspectives. Sometimes they agree, but they come with just so much variety that we genuinely appreciate it, and it's exactly what we need to continue to grow and improve and be challenged, but do so in a way that it's constructive and productive and that we can really provide tangible outcomes. So we thank you for allowing us to share. And sorry, I was fumbling a little. I don't totally do notes. Lesson learned, won't do notes again. But it's been an honor, and I've really appreciated supporting them. And I can't thank Linda enough for sticking with and really making sure that the foundation and development is structured in a way for success.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, members, for being here. It's wonderful to meet you, and thank you for your work. And I, I'm going to open with the first question, which is the beating heart of our city for both staff and council is the business plan. And has the committee been initiated and familiarized with our business plan? What it means to us, why it's so important? And if so, have you, have they provided any like immediate feedback?
So when commissioners began, whether they were initial commissioners or they've since been appointed, they're given a binder, and that binder does include a copy of the business plan. It was also part of, we touched upon it during their inclusion foundation, foundational inclusion training, I apologize. And that was in the spring of '22, I believe, that took place. So we have had a conversation with them about that, but I really think it's more of an annual conversation because that business plan evolves and is updated as we, you know, as things change, as we evolve and. as we evolve in society and, and how we do business.
Yeah, and I, maybe I, just for point of clarification, just the concept of what does it represent and why it's so important?
I think so, but I think we can do a better job in, in letting them know that that's our North Star, and that's what guides us, that's what we strive for and aspire to. So we certainly can. I think we were focused on developing them as a structure. We've just been in this house-building phase, but now we get to get into the good stuff where it is, here's our business plan, and what do you see? And do you see the commission in there? Now there's an opportunity certainly to get more feedback and that be a presentation and conversation.
And, and, and they will then see the part that they play
Yeah, absolutely.
in the business plan.
Absolutely.
which connects us all.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you guys so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. And again, thank you to the Equity Commission members who are here today. I was going through this, and I don't remember seeing it, and if I missed it, I apologize. Who are the current chair and vice chair of the commission?
Commissioner or Chair Nicole Hill, who's been with the commission from inception, and also Vice Chair Lisa Davis, who's also been on the commission the entire time.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. And to finally be able to meet some of our commissioners, it was really nice to meet all of you. Thank you for all the time that you volunteer and energy you put into this. I know it's very valuable. And to that point, how do we, have we learned around the turnover? Because I know we've lost some commissioners, we've gained some new ones. And I know that's pretty typical when it comes to commissions, because they're volunteer-based, and we can't really do a whole lot to incentivize. But how are we learning to maybe uphold, uphold retention? Because we've historically seen, in terms of equity and conversation around DEI and things like that, that falls particularly on those who are most impacted, and it's always like just another level and another thing. And so how are we kind of compensating for that?
Um, I would want to ask them honestly, on what value, you know, I don't want to speak for them as members, but what we've really tried to do is respect their time, be very diligent on customer service, on communication with them, allow them the freedom again, that there's no judgment on any questions or any, you know, challenges. And, and they're sometimes care sensitive to us. They'll be like, was that too much? We're like, no, we could take it, you know, keep being you and, and challenge us some more. So for us, it's been a matter of just being extremely customer service-oriented, making sure we respect them, being empathetic to their circumstances. Because again, to build this into your personal life, when you're volunteering on top of your job, on top of, you know, health and anything else and kids that pop up and other priorities, we know we're asking a lot for the community. The meetings are held on hybrid. They do have it in their bylaws to have so many in person, but they also hold each other accountable for attendance. So they've been really wonderful, but we would really want to ask them, what keeps you coming? What would help keep you motivated? What would help you refer a friend if you had to do that? You know, so I don't want to speak to them, but I think there's an opportunity for sure to ask them. And I think that counts for truthfully all our boards and commissions.
You so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, echoing a great presentation, definitely appreciate the work. And as a former committee member previously on the Human Services Advisory Committee, I would say how much I appreciate your contributions to the policy that we end up enacting. I really, really do value that. I don't think we could do it without that. So I'm very, very excited here that we will, it is planned that we'd be getting more direct policy feedback from this commission. That's something I encourage and welcome and, and couldn't say how much more. More, I think that'd give us a holistic view as a council when we adopt policy. The question I would say in, in the 2024 work plan, what is the role, if any, in the budget development process, and where would they fit into that?
There hasn't been, but that's a wonderful question. Again, this is, this body was meant to be this group that we really could roll those things. So it could be a part of that work plan. It just, last year, you know, wasn't budget, and then the same year budget occurred. They were barely being developed. So I think that's a wonderful recommendation in providing it. Because again, the Inclusion Task Force was not originally for this. So the fact that we now have two bodies that we can navigate between and create separation is huge. But both groups could potentially provide that, you know, in terms of encouraging folks to participate and that awareness. But, you know, talking to the Equity Commission on approach and accessibility or whatever else, you know, is potentially of interest to council to see it be most accessible, you know, and in terms of that or potentially other subjects. But that's a wonderful suggestion.
Oh. Councilmember Vaughn, I see your hand is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several questions. One of it was one of the earlier two, but the other question I have is regarding the reorganization, is reorganization of the city and the Equity Housing Services Department. Has that topic been discussed with the Equity Commission? Kind of their general thoughts on that. I know that the Equity Commission itself, as far as where it's placed for permission, was talked about, but I believe that the folks that I spoke to were not aware of the dissolving of the department itself completely. And I just wanted to know if that dissolving, the department ever came up in conversation with them and their thoughts on it.
Sure. It's more of a repurposing of existing work, so no work is being dissolved or defunded at all. It's just movement of work and assignments. We did let the Equity Commission members know. They also met Kristi Rowland in Executive Services. She presented at our last one. She provided the, and her and Jung IT Director were able to provide the IT strategic plan. Our CAO, Ed Van Bailey, and our lobbyist, I can't, David Foster, sorry. I keep wanting to say Doug Lee. They both provided an update on what we are proposing for legislation. And so we did, we definitely let them know that this will not affect their work and that they're still extremely important. They did express some questions about how they would like to weigh in on the development of the work plan for next year. So that is something we need to make sure we incorporate so that we're covering the subjects that they would like to see passed before them, as well as us needing to pass information through them because of necessity, and we need their feedback as well. So we feel that they are informed, and they're here tonight as well. And so we've been upfront. We've just tried to not get ahead of council's duties. And so we've been patient in trying to be cautious in what we say, but they're aware.
Uh, yes, please. Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in that note, I know that there has been lots of palpitation on the medical rescue plan. But I, and I might have just forgotten because I'm under a cold. But the allocations throughout the process, I know the Equity Commission had been just kind of putting structure into the organization. But at the end of late, the recent proposal of allocation of funds, have that been in front of the dais for them to review, see how applicable that is? As we work on businesses, communities, there are still meetings, small business plans and all the things that we need.
We did not. We continued on the work plan that we had scheduled, and we still have some items that we weren't able to squeeze into this calendar year. But that would certainly be an appropriate item to set forth in front of them. But we did review quite a few other items. But unfortunately, no, we, that didn't make it to the schedule this year.
Okay. Oh, yes.
One more question. I have a more of a rhetorical question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess my question, I'm not seeking an answer necessarily tonight, but it was more, I guess, more of a statement. I specifically posed more to our commissioners. For me, I want to really invite and ask, what can we do to help you succeed in this next stage of development? If you, you know, started at infancy and went through to being a toddler, to put on human ears, and if this is making the leap to preschool, what can this council give you to succeed and thrive in that environment so that you can provide the, you know, what we're asking you to do? And so I want to really invite and encourage, probably not right now, think about it. What, what is that you need from us?
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councilmember Vaughn.
I guess councilor, I'm going to go with two point question. I think this is going to be all right.
Okay. Is there any other? Okay, thank you very kindly for joining us this evening. Thank you for your commitment and your dedication and your volunteerism. Thank you, Mary, Jane, and Linda. And we, I, I suspect we are adjourned. Thank you very much.